Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the August 3rd, 2020 Salisbury City Council Work Session. We have several items on the agenda tonight, and before we start with your presentation of a certificate of appreciation, Ms. Glanz, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good to see everybody today. Today is a bittersweet day for the city of Salisbury. With us, we have Terry Gladys, who is the Chair of our Green Team. And Terry is leaving us for greener pastures. Terry was admitted to the University of Pittsburgh to study public administration, a full ride, I might add, for her master's. So we are so excited for Terry to be going on this new journey. And I think it's important to mention that her major as her master's is Urban Affairs and Planning with a minor in Energy, Environment, and Natural Resource Management. So I told Terry that when she's done, she's going to come back and be one of our planners for the city of Salisbury. But we just wanted to take the time to thank Terry. I'm not sure how long it's been, Terry. Years at this point that we met through Dr. Serax's class, who is joining us tonight, working on policy initiatives and the Green Business Certificate Program for Businesses. You worked on research for the National Folk Festival. You were hands in the trash at the National Folk Festival. And you've been leading our Green Team for many months now, I think, or over a year. So we are just so appreciative of all your work. And so on behalf of, and I'll yield to others as well, but I do just want to present this certificate to you. And I'm going to share my screen so you can see it, and then we will get it to you in the mail.
Thank you.
Weird times. So can everybody see that? Okay, great. So this is a certificate of recognition presented to Terry Gladys from the city of Salisbury for her outstanding service to the city of Salisbury and the Sustainability Advisory Committee Green Team. Terry's many hours of service include chairing the Green Team and volunteering at countless community events, spearheading the city's green business initiative, playing a leadership role in the city's National Folk Festival green efforts, and being instrumental, being an instrumental advocate for the city's sustainability initiatives. And so in witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand to the seal of the city of Salisbury this day, third day of August. So Terry, I'll let Amanda and Alyssa share a few words if they want, but we are so going to miss you. And please don't be a stranger. And if you need anything, please let us know. I'm going to miss your big heart.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to get involved. And if it wasn't for the awesome relationship between the city and the university, giving such an easy avenue to get in and to help, I don't know that I would have. So thank you all so much. And if Salisbury University had a public administration master's degree, I'd be still around. So I'm just taking a two-year detour, but I'll make my way back. Thank you so much.
We will hold that, held you to that, Terry. We want to bring you back. No, I just wanted to say it's been an absolute honor to get to serve with you for, it's probably been three years now since we've been, you know, working together in city sustainability initiatives from, you know, like Julia mentioned, digging through recycled bins at the National Folk Festival to creating trash monsters sculptures. It's been lots and lots of fun, and I will miss you so much, Terry. And please come back and visit.
I certainly will. Thank you so much.
Amanda?
Yes, Terry, thank you so much for all your work on the Green Team. I never knew I could know so much about trash with the pay-as-you-throw research that you did. It was so thorough and fascinating, and we really appreciate the leadership that you've given to the team this last year. So good luck, and please keep in touch.
Boat, any comments?
Thank you for all your work and good luck in Pittsburgh. Let us know if we need to send you Baltimore Ravens Air Pack. I think we can arrange that.
I certainly will. I'll let you know.
This is Gregory.
You know, I haven't known you very long, but I appreciate all the work that you guys have been doing and that you particularly put into this. And I really do hope you come back and continue your work here. But since you're offered the Ravens package, we'll, we'll make sure you get something like that.
Ms. Blake?
Just thank you so much for all your service to the city of Salisbury. It's deeply appreciated.
Sorry, I echo what everybody has said so far, but I will tell you that isn't official certificate. And if you don't come back and work for us, you have to give it back.
I completely do that. I'll be back.
Thanks again, Terry.
Thank you all so much for the opportunity to work with you. It really solidified my love for working in the public sector and was a super pivotal piece in getting me to want to pursue education, to have a public administration degree so that I can keep working for awesome places like you. So thank you all for being such a huge part of that.
We have a resolution to expand disability Advisory Committee membership from seven to nine members. And City Administrator Julia Glanz will lead us through that.
Good evening again, Council. The resolution before you, excuse me, is to increase the membership on the Disability Advisory Committee from seven to nine members. And we are bringing this forward now because I think this year has been pivotal in the way we think about certain populations and bringing their needs forward. And disabled folks being one of those populations, COVID has helped us recognize that there are major gaps and even more so than we realized before or wanted to realize before. And so we've been working with a vulnerable populations working group that I've talked about a number of times here. And it has, we have found some new advocates and some new voices that really would like to be involved. And I don't want to turn them away because there's a limit at seven. And I think that there is such good energy now with the ADA being at 30 years from its original passage that it's just time to get some new folks involved. That if you approve this, you'll be seeing their names next work session. But I think there's just a tremendous amount of energy in the community, and we need to listen to their voices and find out additional ways to continue to support them. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. Mr. Boat, any comments or questions? So we move it forward.
No, it sounds good. It's great to, you know, continually get more people involved. And I think this is a good avenue to allow people to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
I think it's a fantastic idea. I don't see any problem with increasing the membership. I think it's great that we have that many people that want to be involved.
Thank you very much. This is Gregory.
Obviously, I don't have any problem with it. I think it's wonderful that we have such a diverse group representing different aspects to advise the city. And I'm more the mayor.
As most of you know, I used to be the CEO at Lower Shore Enterprises. And Jim Irtan asked me to start the Disability Committee back up after it was inactive for several years. And we had five people, four at some times, and it's great to see that the awareness is back. And I fully support it, and I look forward to the whole process moving forward. So we can move that forward, Mrs. Nichols. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a discussion on connection charge waivers. And Department of Infrastructure and Development Director Amanda Pollak will lead us through that. Amanda, good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So we've talked for a few work sessions now about our comprehensive connection charges. And in particular, that our EDU incentive area program is coming to a close. That was a bank of 300 EDUs for the downtown areas as well as enterprise zones. And we're down to about 28 EDUs left in that bank. So last time we talked, we talked about sort of retooling the program and making it a new, unique program to entertain waiver requests. So we looked at the criteria that's in the current code for this program with the bank. And it had a little bit of outdated information, like consistency with the 2012 Plan for Transformation and some things like that that we were able to update. So what's before you today is a new program with an ordinance to put this in the code that would be for waivers of comprehensive connection charges. So that's capacity fees or if there were facility fees, central system line fees, that type of thing. And I'm going to run down the criteria real quickly. First, the project would have to be in either the Central Business Zoning District or the Riverfront Redevelopment Zoning District. So we're really targeting a very specific area of downtown. The second criteria is that it's either new development or it's revitalization of an existing building. The third is that it is not eligible for an affordable housing capacity fee waiver. So you can't apply for both. The fourth criteria is that the project complies with all zoning, building codes, stormwater codes, and the Historic District Commission regulations. And then we get into some newer things. So the fifth criteria is that the project is either identified in the envisioned Salisbury Master Plan, which was adopted via a resolution in 2016, or the project meets the objectives identified in that plan. So that's new criteria, and this is more current because that plan was a 2025-year plan adopted in 2016. And so it's appropriate for projects downtown to have to meet the goals of that plan. And then the last criteria, number six, is our most substantial new criteria. The project shall provide a public benefit by constructing bicycle infrastructure, sections of the urban greenway, riverwalk, and/or rail trail, public streetscaping elements or public amenities, or the project shall exceed stormwater requirements, or the project utilizes sustainable or green building practices. So this was some new criteria that we're proposing to say, like, the city's willing to partner in these projects with you, and we're willing to consider waiving some of the fees. However, we would like to see a benefit to either directly the citizens of Salisbury or more of our sustainability plan if you are granted this waiver. The rest of the code language is very similar to what we had before, that each request would come in to the Department of Infrastructure and Development. The applicant would list the criteria that they meet with their request. We would review it, forward it to the mayor's office. And then each request would come individually to the city council. So you will review and approve each one individually. Their waivers are good for two years. So if a project has not started within that two-year period, there is an option to extend it for two one-year terms after that, which is similar to what we have now. The waiver's non-transferable. You're looking at a specific project and waiving it for that very specific project. So those are the couple of tweaks that we've proposed here. And again, so this would be a completely new and different program. There's not a bank of EDUs. Projects would have to stand on their own merit and provide some benefit to the city and meet the goals of our envisioned Salisbury Master Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Pollack. Mr. Boat, any comments?
I like how this is laid out. I like that we're putting in the stipulation for any project to receive it, that there's going to be a public benefit. And I like those that are listed. So I support this. And because I still want to see us be able to offer this benefit for redevelopment and development. But I like the criteria that's been added in here. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. Mrs. Blake?
I like it. I think it's wonderful, and I think Amanda's done a great job of explaining it very clearly to everybody. And I hope people take advantage of it.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
It's really clear. And I like the idea of encouraging sustainable and green building. I think this is a great plan. It looks good to me.
Thank you. I agree. I think it's well laid out. I like it. I'd like just to remind everybody that maybe watching this, the only reason we had an EDU bank was because of the linens building. So I think this new approach is individualized and must meet the criteria of our master plan. So I'm all for it as well. So we'll move this on to the regular agenda. Thank you, Amanda.
Great, thank you.
The next you're also up for is the Ross easements. Amanda, why don't you walk us through that?
Okay, so I think you're all familiar with the Ross project. You've seen a lot of construction going on so far this year with demolition. So part of this project, we had discussed earlier this year, much earlier, an agreement for the Ross building to connect to the parking garage with a walkway. So this is the actual easements. There's a temporary construction easement as well as a permanent ongoing maintenance easement for that walkway. So in order for them to connect, they're crossing over city property. So the easement language and exhibits are in the documents. Michael Sullivan is on, as well as the Council for First Move Properties, if there's any question for him. And we have reviewed this with Mark Tillman's office. And with Julia, we had a conference call recently with First Move to go through all the terms of the easements.
Thank you, Amanda. I do have one question, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Last time about the fact that, and I forget who said it, but there was an idea that each of the individual property owners would have to grant the easement or get approval. Has that changed at all?
Each of the neighboring property owners to the west, so continuing up towards the intersection of Division Street and Main Street, all of those property owners executed an acknowledgement that was also notarized, indicating not only that they were comfortable with the walking bridge, but also that they were comfortable and acknowledged and approved the closure of that alleyway behind their buildings to allow for the construction to occur. And in fact, that was put in place, that's not recorded. We have copies of all of those acknowledgement documents that have been signed and notarized. And all of that was put in place and turned in to allow for the closure of that alleyway. So they have been in place for quite some time.
Thank you very much. Questions, Mr. Boat?
No, I support it. I just have a question for Mr. Sullivan. Do you need a scarf? Are you cold? Where are you to wear a jacket in the middle of summer?
Do you know where the hurricane's hitting? That's exactly where I am right this second.
Okay, understood. Ms. Blake?
No comments. I support it.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
I support it. Good luck with the storm.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for my support as well. So we'll move that on to the regular agenda. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, and thank you, Mrs. Pollak.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening.
This time, we have a police department restructuring. Colonel Minchin, you handling it?
Good morning.
Okay.
How's everybody?
Fine, thank you. How are you this evening?
Oh, fine, fine. They've got Captain Drew and Chief with me as well. We are proposing a restructure in the police department. You have a copy of the proposed restructure letter. You can follow along there. That kind of lays it out pretty straightforward. What we're looking at doing primarily is to, we're not looking at changing our authorized strength. So we're authorized 103 officers, and that's from the chief down through the ranks. And on this, what we're looking at doing for a period of one year as a test run, we're looking at freezing the major's position, actually taking those funds and funding that position with a police officer. And that would free up some funds between the officer and what the major was making. That would free up some funds that would allow for this restructure. So what we're looking at doing is freezing the major's position since Major Cole retired. And then we would ask for the increase in strength, not total authorized, but just in strength from seven sergeants to eight, and from seven lieutenants to nine. And that would allow us to go into a restructure plan that the chief and Captain Drew can elaborate on a little further. But that would allow us to do that, and that would still result in a cost savings even after we fill the police officer position of about $40,000 a year.
Colonel, I think you said seven to nine lieutenants. I think you meant seven to nine corporals.
Oh, yes. Sorry about that. Yes, corporals, I'm sorry. Thank you. Chief, do you want to jump in?
Certainly. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. So as you heard from the Colonel, we had an opportunity here with both retirements to take a look at our structure and compare that to the services that we want to offer our community. With the restructure, we're looking to do three main components. We want to be a lot more efficient overall with our delivery of services. We also want to better use that admin group, so the lieutenant structure itself. We want to put that to better use within the agency. We do have a cost savings. And really, the focus is to try to bring back community policing within our neighborhoods. So the way that this would roll out is we would have two corporals per squad. We would use officers that are already assigned to the patrol squads, and we would break them into teams. One team would handle routine calls for service. And another cell or component of that squad would be able to specifically handle and focus on community policing with the goal of looking at rebuilding trust, identifying specific problems in neighborhoods, building relationships to solve those problems, and generally be more accessible to the community that we're serving. What we're looking to do with the lieutenants in particular is have them take on more of, more true administration within the agency. They are ultimately going to retain oversight for the individual patrol squads. But we're going to have them start stepping into a role where they can learn more about command group operations, and they can assume more responsibilities in line with their administrative rank. So are there any particular questions that we can answer up to this point?
Don't think so. I'll ask each of the, each of the members if they have any comments. Captain Drew, you want to, would you like to add anything? Or, okay. Mr. Boat, any questions or comments?
Are we, how will we do this as an ordinance, I would suppose?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Blake? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I think it's worth a try. And so I support moving forward with it.
Blake?
I think it's a really good idea, and I think getting back to community policing will go a long way in mending some things with the community and, you know, having police being seen differently than just, you know, coming in as, you know, the enforcer. Community policing was really popular back in the mid-'90s in the Church Street area, and it worked out really well. A lot of the kids really got to meet the police officers individually, and that really was helpful. So I'm for it.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
I definitely like the move to community policing. I think this is a step in the right direction. We've gotten away from it in the past, and I think we're getting, we're getting back on track with it. I think that's good.
Thank you. I too support it. I'm a big fan of community policing. I was when Chief Duncan came. And we had our discussions about that. And it's great that we're doing that, and hopefully will have a direct impact. I'm sure it will. Feet on the street and working with people is the key to anything, I think. And I commend the chief and Colonel and Captain for this concept, and I fully support it. So we'll move that forward then. Okay?
Mr. President, can I ask one? I just want to reiterate that this isn't sort of a going back to, or getting back to community policing. The chief and her team have believed in this and have been doing this every day in our schools and in our neighborhoods. But like, you know, anything, we do have to evolve and figure out how to do things differently. And this is, you know, what, where we need to be now. But we are going to continue to do the great community policing work with our youth and in our schools, in some new way with schools. But they've been doing this work, so I just, I just don't want that to be forgotten here.
Well, taken. Okay, at this time, we are going to have a discussion about charter changes. And Ms. Glanz, I believe you're going to lead us through that.
Yes. So the first one, I think, tonight is in reference to the term city treasurer in the charter. So this is an outdated term. We don't have a city treasurer anymore. And I guess the city clerk used to hold that title, and Kim doesn't want to do it. So we would like to strike that. So it is up to date with our structure as it is today. And certainly, if there is ever a need to go back to it, we can always add it back in. But Keith Corger is doing a great job with our finances. So that's the recommendation today.
Questions or comments about that one, Mr. Boat?
No, I'm just glad we can maybe clean up some of these older terms in the charter. And there's probably some more, but this is at least one spot that we can start, and it's an easy fix.
Blake?
I concur.
Gregory?
I agree.
I agree also. So we can move that one forward, that one change. Next up?
Great. The next charter amendment suggestion is to delete the reference of the deputy city administrators in the plural. We still want to keep Andy around. But so a few years ago, we looked at, we restructured the whole city. And part of that, what we came to an understanding with you all was that we were going to try to do, have a structure with two deputy city administrators. We did that for about a year and a half and realized that it wasn't for us. So we have been working with just one deputy city administrator for the last three years now, or I guess two years now. And it seems to be working very efficiently for us. So again, just wanting to make sure that our structure matches the charter.
Great, thank you. Mr. Boat, any questions or problems?
No, I support this moving forward.
Ms. Blake?
I concur with you.
Yep, this is Gregory.
I agree.
And I concur as well. So that's the next one out. Next, we have competitive bidding and lease terms.
Well, I will just say on the last item that Andy's not here, so we could pretend that we took out the whole reference of deputy city administrators. That's what he gets for not being here. I'm just kidding. All right, so this next charter change, three for three tonight, is a recommendation where we initially started with looking at just, and Mark, please help me as you see me struggling on this one. We initially visited this topic around leases and realizing that our language in our charter was limiting in allowing folks to, and it could go from a community garden to a larger development project. When there's money invested, folks want to know that there has, sorry, dog issues. Folks want to know that there's a long-term success plan for their project, whether it be a community garden or a larger development. And so we were sort of pigeonholed with the current three-year language that's in the charter currently. So we would like to, when in the best interest, Um, so we would like to um, it, when in the best interest that, you know, the administration and council see fit. Uh, that we would bring a project for, forward for council consideration to waive that um, that term. And, and develop a, a term of your own. Um, so that, that is the leasing term. And Mark, maybe you can help me with the, with the competitive bidding one a little bit here.
Sure. The, uh, our charter never capped the length of term for leases. But what it did do was require that leases beyond three years be put out for competitive bid. Obviously to avoid, you know, one administration having a deal with someone. And then the next administration doesn't like it or thinks it's inappropriate. But what, what, what this, but what the council has always had the power to do. Is when it went out for competitive bid for beyond three years, the council could always reject it for any reason. And that was already in the charter. Uh, wh- what we've got now is a situation where several people have come to the city looking for leases. Where we only wanna deal with that individual. Obviously, the community garden is a good example. Uh, or in the case of the Ross project, no one else is gonna wanna bridge from that building to our parking garage. So to put that out for public bid would almost be disingenuous. I mean, it, it, you know, obviously, no one else would want it. Um, so what this really does is say that when those types of circumstances arise, the council will look at it. And say, this shouldn't be put out for public bid because we're trying to work out, uh, you know, these two neighboring properties. And we wanna lease to this person because there's a good city purpose for doing that. That's all. I, I think it's, it's really a, a better reflection and a more honest reflection of what the city can do. To, to word it that way.
I think I understand, but I just have one question. It would still come before uh, the council and the work session, correct?
You mean, will it come back again?
Well, if, if someone's considering doing that.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I think the administration always brings proposals like that to the council.
I just wanna make sure that that's, that's gonna stay the way it is, because otherwise just cutting it out then leaves it wide open in some cases.
But they, you, they would still need the council's permission if it were leased beyond three years anyway, and, and.
Okay.
That, no, that, that's, that's a given. That, this is just, it doesn't force the administration to put it out for bid. If the administration and the council agree that it's not appropriate for a bid.
That's good. Okay. Mr. Boda, any questions?
I, I agree. I, I, I support it.
Blake?
Yes.
Thank you.
Support.
This is Gregory.
I support it.
Thank you. So uh, we'll move that one along, and I believe we have one more.
Uh, yes, so the, the last. Piece of legislation, not a charter change, I think this is just a resolution, oh, ordinance. Uh, is for us to continue on um, with meetings like this. Once the pandemic is over, one day, hopefully. Um, it's, it's enabling electronic participation in, in city council meetings and uh, task forces, boards and commissions. Um, as we've all realized, the amount of participation from the public uh, throughout these last five months. I think we can all agree it's been uh, much more than it would have been if we were in um, council chambers altogether. Which is wonderful. Uh, we all wanna see more um, citizen participation, community participation. So I think this um, enables uh, folks to more easily be a part of the process and have their voices heard. And, you know, speaking back to the ADA and um, that resolution. This is again more uh, inclusive to all folks in our community. Whether it's um, a disability, childcare issues, um, mobility issues in the sense of, of transportation. So um, so that's the participation piece from the community. I think it also makes more sense for uh, all of us together to be able to participate if necessary uh, electronically. Whether um, you know, we're on vacation, or we're sick at home, or um, you know, we wanna let staff go home, you name it. Or folks traveling in from uh, far away. Uh, it just makes, it makes the most sense. So this legislation will enable that. Uh, it also has some, some guidelines on how um, folks would notify if they couldn't participate in person. Uh, so someone doesn't abuse this and it never shows up to a meeting in person. But uh, I think it's, it's, it makes sense for where we are and in the world today.
Mr. Boda?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think this is uh, uh, you know, making, you know, modernizing uh, what we do. And uh, with the technology, uh, like she said, if people are traveling, if, you know, you know, Jack, you're, you're in. You're up north in New Hampshire. So I mean, you know, with technology, we can still do the business of the city. Uh, so um, and, you know, I remember that time that I traveled to Peru. I used Skype to Skype in the meetings. And uh, so I mean, the technology's there for us to still do what we need to do if we can't be physically present. So I support this. Thank you.
Blake?
Yeah, I, I totally support it. I think it makes total sense. And um, it's the times we're in and, and it's just matching where we're at in the world. So I agree.
Gregory? This is Gregory.
I think it's a great thing. Um, it, it'll allow. It, it will allow so much more uh, participation, which we've seen. Um, so I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. Um, two things, you know, especially while, why I agree with this. One is the participation for sure. We, we've seen it. We've heard from people we never heard from before. Uh, and I think that's, that's a positive thing. The other, the other piece of it is um, severe storms. Uh, snow, uh, instead of canceling meetings, you can still make them, have the meeting go forward. And I think that's a positive too, cuz as we know, um, the summers are, are slow times. But during, you know, from September on, uh, there's an awful lot of things that need to get done and need to get done quickly. And this will allow us to make sure that we can almost guarantee have a quorum. Um, and I, I think that's very positive as well. So I support it as well.
And Mr. President, I'll, I'll add that um, our um, information services director, Bill Garrett. Um, and Keith um, and Tom from PAC fourteen and the county have all been working together to upgrade. Um, with some small dollars, uh, council chambers to enable us all to smoothly go back into, into council chambers whenever that may be. And still have this um, and, and make it smooth for the, for the public to participate and whomever to participate electronically. Um, and I'll be on the same page, so we should be uh, ready when we get back.
Great, thank you. Uh, the last item on the agenda is a donation of turkey deli meat from Purdue Farms for the employee food pantry. Um, our, our deputy administrator, the one. Uh, he, you didn't fire him, Julia, so.
I, I didn't. I think he's having uh, some.
So I guess you're, you're gonna have to handle it.
I, I will. So um, the city of Salisbury a few months ago, uh, over the last year, has been playing with this idea of. Um, a food pantry um, to make sure that our employees um, have access to healthy um, food options. And this has been built off of our wellness committee that has done tremendous work over the last uh, number of years. And so this just sort of um, barreled downhill into this. And it, it's unfortunate that we have to be talking about this. Um, but it is a reality, so we wanna address it head-on. Um, and we're also addressing it by raising wages and things like that, but it's not necessarily just um, you know, a wage issue. Um, but so we have opened, uh, loosely opened because of the pandemic um, a pantry in the visitor center. So it enables folks to come in um, through the front door or the back door if, if there are um. You know, privacy concerns and things like that. And sort of the first, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure how this arrangement came to be with Purdue donating this food, but we are very grateful for it. Uh, but they've donated two thousand pounds of, of turkey meat. And so we uh, have a freezer, and not all of the two thousand pounds are in our little freezer, but we get deliveries every now and then. Uh, and we open it up to staff um, every Wednesday. And I think the first Wednesday, we had uh, thirty-four employees participate in it. And, and you know, we don't have thirty-four employees show up to any event that we have, you know, for, for wellness and things like that. So it, it was great to see that um, and employees from all across the board. Um, and folks that you, you, you don't have to be uh, food insecure or, or whatever to take advantage of it. Um, it's just a, a perk. Um, and so there's also other things, other items in the pantry as well. Um, but as um, you know, when we're all back together, I think it'll be uh, a much more um, you know, bustling operation. And um, Amy in the visitor center has been uh, taking the lead with it and doing a really great job. So thanks to Amy. So the, the turkey meat is uh, worth approximately eight thousand dollars. So again, thank you to Purdue Farms for the generous donation, and uh, we'll put it to good use.
Thank you, Ms. Glance. Mr. Boda?
Um, and I know, so if people wanna contribute to the pantry, do we have to do a resolution every time somebody wants to donate?
No, it's just that this was over five thousand dollars. So anything under five thousand dollars, we keep a record, and we'll bring that to you twice a year. Um, but if it's over five thousand dollars in value, uh, we have to accept it uh, with, with you.
Okay. So do we have anything set up where if, if somebody wants to donate to the pantry, how do we go about doing that?
Um, I don't know if we have a mechanism for that yet. I can ask Evie. We have established a relationship with the Maryland Food Bank uh, and are using some of our, our wellness dollars that we get from. Uh, Blue Cross on our own that we put into, you know, I don't think we bought a lot yet just because of uh, the times. But we will take advantage of those dollars to, to maximize. You can get a lot with uh, food banks agreement, which is really great.
Yeah.
So looking forward to, you know, one day being able to do that.
Okay, thank you. I, I support this, of course.
Blake?
I think it's fantastic. I, I've been following the wellness um, committee during COVID, you know, and getting a lot of good ideas from them. So it's been very nice to see that, you know, evolve and unfold. And I, I just think it's very nice that we have a city that looks after employees on many levels, and I think it's great. And um, yes, I, I definitely agree with the uh, donation and grateful for them donating that.
Gregory?
I think this is a great idea. Um, it's, you know, we've all seen in the past six months. It's anything can change at any time and, you know, um, given, given the time. We're in with, with the pandemic and everything. I think this is a great idea, and I'm really glad to see the city doing it. And also I can't help but think that eight thousand uh, dollars worth of turkey is a whole lot of uh, whole lot of chili. But uh, yeah, that's, that's fantastic. And if there's a way for people to donate, uh, that would be fantastic.
Thank you. Uh, I concur, and I also wanna thank Purdue for their generous donation. That's pretty, pretty cool. Um, that concludes our uh, our agenda. Uh, right now, I know there's some other people on the line. Uh, anyone who has a comment about um. Any of the items on the agenda that wants to make a comment, uh, please identify yourself and uh, Ms. Glance will unmute you. Anybody requesting participation?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, remarks for the good of the order, Mr. Boda?
Um, good to see everybody again this week, and uh, hope everybody can uh, be safe tonight and brace for the rain tropical storm it got coming. Uh, so everyone, if you could keep an eye on your neighbors, keep an eye on your street. Uh, and uh, if, if we have any, any things that, that fall down, uh, you know, make sure we call in. To, to public works to, if we need to, if you can't take care of it yourself. Also, if there are downlines, don't touch them. So uh, just everybody be safe tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. This is Blake.
Um, I just wanna repeat about the, the hurricane, you know, making sure that you're prepared. Um, if you have need to get medications or um, any extra food, um, you know, just be safe. Also, again, if you're healthy enough, please, please donate blood. Um, the eastern shore in particular is very, very low, and many people um, need the gift of blood.
Gregory?
Uh, just wanna rea- reiterate what, what you're, and, and all said. You know, be careful this week, eh, with the storm coming in. Um, keep an eye out. Uh, look out for your neighbors. Please wear a mask. You're out in public. Make sure it goes up, covers your nose and your mouth. And that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Uh, I too would like to remind everybody, if you're healthy enough, please give blood. Uh, we're still in bad shape. And also, please be safe, not just to the pandemic now, but watch the storm coming. Um, you never know in Salisbury. We could get rushed by, or we can get hit, hammered. So uh, everybody be careful. With that, um, I will, meeting will be adjourned. Everybody have a great evening. Thank you.